Afternoon, everyone. We're just after four o'clock, so we'll convene this meeting of the Bennington Planning Commission for the purposes of considering a request by the developer to consider designating the Chelsea Solar site in the Apple Hill area as a preferred site under the town's solar ordinance. Our specific format this evening will be to -- this is a deliberative session of the Planning Commission. We will be deliberating based on the submittals, the information, and the submittals and information received after the last hearing that we had, this being the third meeting in the process. And we will not be taking additional information or comments, asking or answering questions from those in attendance. I would like to again ask the members of the Commission to push their microphone buttons and introduce themselves.
Senator LaSalle. Bruce DeMerriman.
Evan Yuduski.
And Michael McDonough, Chair.
And I'm staff person for the Planning Commission, Dan Monks.
Yes. So, we will begin this process tonight, and I'm very much communicating and deferring to the Commission as to how they might like to proceed to open discussion. It may be reasonable for us to give initial consideration to the preferred status question, the elements that are contained within that, and offer our thoughts about the ways in which the proposal meets the guidelines for preferred status. Oh, and I should mention, lastly, that our deliberations this evening will result -- could result in a recommendation being made to the Select Board either on the preferred status or other considerations that the Select Board would take into consideration. As we are operating in an advisory role to the Select Board, the Select Board will ultimately make a decision of what is, if anything, is communicated with the Public Utilities Commission. Dan, did you have other -- a couple of other things you wanted to mention?
No, I'm glad you mentioned that. So, just to be very clear, this is -- the Planning Commission will not be making a final decision. They will only be making recommendations to the Select Board. The Select Board will have their own, I assume it's under their control, I assume they'll have their own hearing process. Unfortunately for some of you who may have to go through a presentation again in front of the Select Board, that's going to be up to the Select Board, how they want to handle that. But the Select Board will be making the final decision, as Michael said, on whether or not they want to communicate to the Public Utilities Commission a position and what that position will be on behalf of the town. So, although the Planning Commission will make a recommendation, the final decision is fully within the Select Board's hands, or will be after this evening, hopefully. So, we'll see where that goes. But ultimately, it'll be in front of the Select Board before a final decision is made.
Yes. So, would anyone like to lead off with questions, comments, thoughts on the preferred status question? We're being bashful.
I will say that, I guess, just a comment that all of the information that we received from both the developers and from members of the community were very helpful in presenting a full case scenario for this. It was a lot to read over, but I think it gave us all good perspective.
Yeah, it did, very much so. And many of the people here this afternoon participated in that process in a very important and informative way, and we appreciate that a great deal.
Michael, I could maybe try to kick it off a little bit?
Yeah, that would be good.
I'm not going to express an opinion, but maybe we can focus our discussion on perhaps the biggest issue, in my opinion, to be determined, in that the applicant, Chelsea Solar, has asserted that the Chelsea site is a preferred area because of its, and this is in quotes, this is the town plan language, "because of its proximity to existing hedgerows or other topographical features that naturally screen the entire proposed array." And that is the basis on which they have requested the Planning Commission to determine that it's a preferred area. As we know, there are other considerations, like solar siting facility criteria in addition to that, but that's the primary question, and we may even be able to stop it there, depending upon what our decision is. But that is what the four of you folks will need to decide tonight on what recommendation you want to make to the Select Board. Well, I guess you could say we're not making a recommendation. There's that option, too. I'm assuming that's not what's going to happen, but that is open to you folks. But the decision this evening likely will be to recommend to the Select Board that they agree or that it's a preferred area, or disagree that it's a preferred area, and communicate that to the Public Utilities Commission. So, you folks, there's lots of information regarding that issue, so it's really now in your hands on how you want to guide the Select Board or recommend to the Select Board how they should proceed.
Would we have any general comments on what we interpret the definition, if you will, of preferred status that is contained within the planning document? Does that shed any light on the discussion from anyone's perspective? And I can offer something in that regard. The statement defining preferred status is a very simple one, and to me, the intent suggested is that it is a description which suggests existing conditions that don't necessarily rely on manipulation of the site, its topography, or any other particular features of the site, other than possibly clearing, as in this situation, to achieve the designation of preferred status. Anyone have any counter to that or addition to that?
No, nothing additional. I think the wording was clear to me in the energy amendment.
I would agree that it does not imply that gross migrations of the land would be acceptable.
Yeah. I have a general case in point that I've been sort of struggling, well, not struggling with, but I've been thinking about is, we're talking about solar arrays, and I think that the basis, or the base, the topography, the setting of the solar array ought to respond to the existing conditions, whether it be a meadow of rolling hills or depressions, that it not necessarily have to be, or should be, a flat site unless that's the condition that exists. And so, obviously, I'm revealing one of the basic tenets of my vision here, which is the alteration of the topography. And I would even suggest the permanence of that alteration. It can obviously be reclaimed if one wanted to, and our whole attitude regarding solar installations does suggest, and the criteria suggests, that in the event of removal, change in technology, whatever it might happen to be, that site returns to its original condition. And so, I'm hung up on the excavation component to achieve the screening element.
And I would add that certainly there are different cases for applications such as this, where there's been discussion of how does this return once the array is deconditioned? And it's been very clear that it would return to the existing conditions.
Yes.
So, I think that's very, very much in line with what decisions we've made before.
Yes. Anything else in particular on that?
I would say that excavation was something that I did consider, although I did put much more weight on the impacts on, possible impacts on view sheds, as I was weighing the -- I mean, I think it is something to be considered, though, absolutely.
Yeah. The proposal to excavate is obviously an attempt to hide, to put it in simple terms. And it presumably would be successful in doing that, particularly on the uphill northern boundaries of the site. Another area that I find hard to anticipate is the impact on the screening by the clearing. And obviously, the site requires clearing to produce the solar array that is proposed there. But there was one photograph in the original submittal that actually puzzled me for a time, and Dan helped me to understand what I was looking at. There were two photographs taken from the north edge of the woodlot, and we're viewing, the camera was viewing to the south, and in the first of the two photographs, you were essentially seeing a, and these were leaf-off photos, I believe, you were seeing a fairly solid, opaque woodlot. And then the second photo viewed what I'll simply describe as North Side Drive. And it puzzled me as to how those two photos were taken and so on, and it was Dan that suggested that the second photo was a representation of the thinned slash cleared woodlot, and that rather than looking through yards of vegetation, you were looking through 10 yards of vegetation, or whatever it might happen to be. And I put it in reverse. I said, "Well, if you can, if you have this obstructed but understandable view of North Side Drive at the bottom of the hill, what does that mean about standing on North Side Drive and looking back up at the hill?" And I'm not sure that, I raised it in that first meeting, but I'm not sure it ever really got discussed, because then we sort of went on to the professional analysis of view sheds. So, that piece has lingered in my mind. Do we think that we got enough analysis of view sheds?
I'd like to weigh in on that. What I find difficult about assessing this particular request is that it's adjacent to another property that could very well be developed into another solar array, depending on the outcome of the lawsuit. And while legally, yes, they are separate entities, visually, they are not. And so, therefore, I find it difficult to assess this properly without an analysis of the entire two properties. So, in terms of having enough information, I'd say no.
Yes. Others?
So, I want to address Nick's, because it is a unique situation, in that normally we'd be looking at two projects that would have to comply with this town plan. But what's happened because of the delay in these projects, you have one project that's in litigation that may get approved under the old town plan. I don't know. I mean, it's been, it hasn't been approved, but it's possible. And we have this project that has to meet the criteria of the new town plan. Normally, what you'd see is, you'd see if these projects came in under the current situation, you see one project come in, or two at a time, but let's say one project come in, we'd review it under the criteria, second project come in, and we'd have a chance to review that one under the criteria. In this particular place, your hands are tied as far as, I'm not saying you can't consider it, but I'm saying it's not, you're not going through the normal process where you'd be able to look at one and then the other. We would not have the opportunity to look at the impact of the second one if it was approved at the Supreme Court level. So, it does hamstring you folks, and it is make it more difficult for you folks to make a decision of cumulative impact, because we don't have that information. So, it is an important consideration, and one that's a little tricky because of the timing of how these applications have come through the process. So, that's not really a helpful answer, but it's a factual statement.
There's one additional reflection I had on the, particularly on the excavation, which I find difficult to reconcile with the wording of the town plan section, and that is that if we were to approve this or to recommend it, it's not our approval, but if we were to recommend it, it seems to me we would, in a sense, be recommending the excavation of land as an acceptable way to meet this standard, and that many other places in the town might thus qualify and could see this as a precedent that allowed them to consider that as a way to meet this standard. And I don't really think that that is the intent of the regulation as it's written, and so I would hate to see that interpretation expanded to the possibility of other development. It seems to me it's very clear that it says existing vegetation and topography, and that so that any proposal submitted suggesting that seems to me already, suggesting excavation seems in contrast, or in contradiction to that condition. So, the other thing I would say about the screening aspect is it's been pointed out that they, that, again, contrary to the advice in the, in the energy section of the town plan, that the developer needs to have full control over the screening.
Yes, thank you.
And we know that much of that property belongs to the state, and we also have recent past experience, within the last 10 years, of V-Trans significantly modifying that intersection. They ground away hillsides, they, there's much less cover there now than there was when I moved here 20 years ago, and most of that was a result of the reworking of Interchange One on Route Seven. So, it seems we have no control, or the developer has no control, really, over what the state may choose to do with that land, depending on what the exigencies are that they're responding to in their development. So, I, those are my comments.
I will say, in terms of having enough information, I guess, from on the development side, we saw a lot with modeling work, and I think that there, I think when you're looking at models versus real pictures that have been supplied by the public, or just even knowing the area, driving around the area, I think it can be hard to make a even comparison between those two scenarios. I know the process behind modeling can sometimes be unclear, so having to weigh the modeling of the, from the, from the experts who were contracted out, it was a little challenging for me, I would say.
I would bring up an additional topic that isn't totally germane to this and the criteria which the document provides us. But one issue that was raised was the issue of the Arcon zoning designation. And there is not a direct connection, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, between Arcon and allowance or prohibition of solar installations within the Arcon. Is that a correct, fair statement?
It's a fair statement to say that, according to advice from our council, that simply because it's in a rural conservation district does not automatically disqualify it from consideration. That being said, obviously, the rural conservation district is very sensitive with regard to view sheds and scene equalities, so there are, it's a much higher bar.
Yes.
But it doesn't automatically disqualify it. But there's lots of considerations that need to be taken into account because of the rural conservation district's sensitivity with regard to view sheds and scene equalities.
Yes. Some of those installations, and remind me again, have we had two installations, or what is the number right now?
Of what?
Solar arrays, sorry.
For this project?
No, within the bounds of our planning documents.
I guess I'm not following your question.
Okay.
Sorry.
There's one on Seven South.
Yep.
I'm trying to count it in my head. We have the arrays behind Home Depot.
Yeah, there's two on Shields Drive.
Yes, two on Shields Drive.
There's a small array at the Sheriff's Department.
Sheriff's Department, Murphy Road.
Yep.
Yeah. Does that sort of cover the list this far?
Isn't there an array also north of Route Nine as you go up?
Yes, there is.
Oh, that's right. Yes, yes.
And one in North Bennington on 1167A.
Right, yes. Yes.
And there are actually two on Route Seven South.
Yes.
Not just one.
Yep. One on each side of the road.
Yeah, Sheriff's.
Oh, that's right. They are on both sides of the road, yes. Yeah.
So, I'd like a little clarification on this question about the Arcon district. Is that because, under an Act 248 process, they can assume that this is basically public good and therefore overrides local zoning restrictions?
So, locals, we don't have the authority to restrict power generation facilities through local zoning. It's absolutely 100% the jurisdiction of the Public Utility Commission. Now, there is statute that says that they're supposed to give substantial deference to the opinion of the municipality, which is what the Select Board presumably will do, and then you would expect the Public Utility Commission to give substantial deference to that decision. But we do not, as a town, we cannot say you absolutely cannot put it in this location. We could write anything we wanted in our town plan, but ultimately, the Public Utility Commission makes the final decision.
One of my points, I think, which, to a certain extent, is not determinative in this or any solar array regard, but I think it's been an important element raised by the public, is the relationship between the solar array presence and surrounding development. And though it's, I'm not sure if there's a direct correlation there, but in this particular case, there is that relationship with an established residential development, unlike, say, those at the, near the Sheriff's Department and some of the other arrays. We have one array in Shields Industrial Park. And I remember when we reviewed that, we were also excited and pleased about the idea of having an array in what was a good site in terms of solar exposure, but it was also a very good site in terms of non-off-site impacts. So, that weighs into my thinking, although it doesn't, it doesn't hold the weight of what I might call statutory considerations. Is there anyone else that has a particular aspect of this that you feel should weigh our decision in one direction or the other? Then I'm going to suggest that perhaps the next reasonable step would be a motion, if anyone cares to articulate one.
So, I believe the motion would be for us to vote on the preferred site designation for the Chelsea Solar project, as outlined in the, we would call it the 45-day letter, correct?
Yes.
Making a clear designation between that and any other proposed projects.
Yes, certainly. But specifically, the motion applying to Chelsea Solar would be either in the affirmative or not.
It could be something as simple as a motion to make a recommendation to the Select Board, either A, to determine that this is, to deem this site a preferred site, or not to deem it as a preferred site, and then we could certainly discuss, we could reiterate the findings that would lead to that conclusion. But I think a simple motion to that effect, we could get us started.
Someone want to put their name on that?
I'll put my name on that.
Is there a second?
Well, what's the motion?
So, I would say the motion would be to not approve as a preferred site.
So, recommend, you're making a motion to recommend?
Recommend, yeah, I should say to recommend, yeah, sorry.
That they not deem the site a preferred area?
Correct.
Is there a second?
Second?
There is a second. I can't turn to all of you and ask you if you have any additional comments. But any other comments from the Commission?
Before you take, before you take about who seconded, I didn't, it was, okay. Thank you, sir. All right, I'm ready.
So, all in favor of the motion?
Discussion?
Oh, yes, yes, that's right. It asked for discussion.
Would this be the appropriate moment, and there's an issue for me that I would like the PUC to be cognizant of, but that doesn't affect our recommendation to the Select Board? So, is this the right time to discuss that, or do we discuss that later?
I think you could discuss it now, but maybe if it's not directly related to this decision point, it's important that we will be, there will be an opportunity after we make this decision regarding a recommendation to add comments that we would like the Select Board to pass along to the Public Utilities Commission. So, if it's not directly related, we could get this one out of the way and then move on, yeah.
Yes, okay. So, all in favor of the motion to recommend not designating the Chelsea site as preferred? Please say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, abstentions? It's easy when there's only four of us.
Okay.
Okay.
So just to, I know there's more comments, but just to maybe a little bit of process here. So are you folks comfortable, well, we can wait till the end before you decide this, but we'll want to determine how best to proceed from here, and there are a couple ways. I may make, I make a recommendation that you authorize the chairperson to draft up the findings and conclusion, and forward that on to the Select Board based on our discussion this evening. The other way to do it is to put a draft together and come back together and have another meeting, because we're not, we can't deliberate over email. It's not, it doesn't meet the public records law or the public meeting law. So that's a decision to be made before we adjourn this evening, how you want to proceed to get those recommendations in written format to the Select Board. So just throw that out there while we, just to think about while we finish up our discussion.
I'd note that we have a regularly scheduled meeting not too far in the distance, so...
Although I do have a conflict on that meeting.
Oh, that's right.
So we'd have to, we'd have to do a, we could do a makeup meeting. There's not a deadline on this, because we've already responded to the Public Utilities Commission initially with not having enough information to make a determination.
Yes.
It's not deemed, it's not like if we don't act, it's going to be automatically deemed one thing or another.
Yes.
So we can wait. We can also chat at the end of this meeting about what particular criteria they want to go into the written recommendations, so that, you know, we may not have to get back together. But that's completely up to you folks. I just, I do, I am not available next week on regularly scheduled meetings, so.
Yeah, okay.
Do we need a motion on the recommendation for moving it forward to the board? Or is that just a decision we can offer as instructions to you as how we want to do that?
Oh, you mean the actual conveyance of the decision to the Select Board?
Well, as Dan was describing it, whether we go ahead and submit it to the board with our notes, or whether we need another review of the process.
Well, I would make a recommendation. I think the final draft should be seen by the commission before it goes to the board. And I would add to that, that there may be other elements that we discuss further today that would provide additional components to that report to the Select Board.
Well, one way we could do it, Michael, again, this is getting into the details, but, I mean, you could certainly authorize, Michael, to draft, do a draft, and then we could circulate it among you folks. You can't comment on it substantively, but you could say, "I request another meeting." And if you don't request another meeting, it'll go out.
Yeah.
But we can't go back and forth and change things. So that's one other way to do it, so.
So I don't think we need a motion to act on the previous motion, which puts in kind of silly language, but, so I think we've authorized the deliverance of that recommendation to the Select Board. I want to come back to, I think, a conversation that Nick was wanting to proceed with, and broaden that to the idea of what other things do we think are pertinent to Select Board's approval, acceptance, or denial, or expansion on the preferred status question. Nick?
Sure. Well, this doesn't go to the preferred status. This goes to making the PUC just aware that we have concerns.
Okay.
And that has to do with the surface hydrology of the site, once it's been excavated. You know, they've done their core sampling, they've gone down 18 feet or whatever it is. But that doesn't say anything about how the soil is going to perk, and how water is going to move on the surface of the site after the excavation. So I would like to see, if I were on the PUC, I would like to see the thorough analysis of that.
Yes. See, I think there's a link there, because I think that the first ears or eyes to see that concern would be the Select Board, so that they can understand what our thoughts are, and then the Select Board would choose to include that in its response.
We can recommend that that be forwarded, that concern should be conveyed to the PUC.
Yes. Are there any other thoughts in addition to the preferred status? I'm even suggesting, I suppose, well, the Select Board has the option of accepting the recommendation or not. If the board was to not accept the recommendation, are there other things that we would want, like the hydraulic investigations? Are there other things like that that we would like to see included? And I like Nick's idea that from the point of view of the PUC, any of these things will serve to justify our decision, our recommendation. So is there anything else?
I think there should have been, and I actually went to the monument, but I think there should have been an impact analysis from the view from the monument.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, huge tourist attraction in not only our town, but the state of Vermont, and I think that that was not addressed properly in the submission.
I don't disagree with that, but I think they have made their case that they do not believe that it is visible from, whether that's accurate or not. But that's, their testimony was that, they said, "You have to put a camera outside and take a picture." Not saying that's true or not, but they, that's their response to why they didn't provide an analysis. But you're saying that even if that's the case, then show us, you know?
Yeah, and there was one picture that was submitted from a member of the public, and the view was from the apple orchard, looking right at the monument. I mean, you can see almost the entire monument.
Yep.
Well, and I think my impression was from their presentation, that they were talking about only from the monument itself, whereas you have the grounds of the monument, this area where people park.
That's right.
And that opens out to the north.
Yes.
That's a very good point, yeah. Their discussion was if you were at the top versus, you know, where on the entire site, is there an impact? There may or may not be, but we didn't have information regarding that.
So a general way of describing that would be that we felt, and Nick, I think you've already said this, but to make it official for our report to the Select Board, we felt there was insufficient data and therefore shallow conclusions about the visual impacts from a broader area than just the selected sites.
I agree with that.
Although I do want to make clear that we do, that we do believe we had enough information to make our preferred area determination, because that doesn't, didn't necessarily require this additional analysis. I think that additional analysis is, if it's deemed a preferred area, then it becomes even more important to do that analysis. So you can stop right there at the prefer.
Yeah.
I just want to, because unless I'm wrong, it sounds like you guys were satisfied, you had enough information to make the determination regarding the preferred area, but if you were asked to make a determination about, you know, specific impacts, if they're allowed to build there, you didn't have enough, you didn't necessarily have enough information to make a final decision on that. There's a difference, there is a difference there, which I think is important.
I'm going to be a little picky. Did we not raise that question during our initial deliberations?
Yes.
Yes, so I think that that serves to become grounds for our decision.
Yeah, I think it is a ground for, but it also is the grounds that the manipulation of the site makes it ineligible to be concerned, to be deemed a preferred area.
That's right.
That is independent of the, all the criteria, you know, all the view shed analyses.
That's true.
Not saying it's not part of the, but that alone, based on what you folks have said, that manipulation of the site alone is enough to disqualify it.
Yeah.
We don't even need to even, it's good for them to know they should do that if they decide that they disagree on that particular point.
Yep.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we're going to have to write something up.
That's right, yes. And the guidance in the ordinance doesn't specifically say that.
Yeah.
It simply talks about screening. It doesn't say much about the effectiveness of the screening and the distance of impacts and all of that. So we had, we do have some wordsmithing to do. Any other topics such as that? I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I honestly think this is very sufficient findings for us to support your conclusion, so I don't think we need to, you know.
Manufacture?
Manufacture additional findings unless you folks want to.
Yes.
But I do think it all came down to that, you know, trying to understand what the intent of, what the town plan was regarding the screening from, by proximity to existing hedgerows or other topographical features, because that's the criteria on which they relied upon.
That's right.
If they can't meet that, if this project can't meet that, then it doesn't get to be considered further under the town plan's guidance.
Yes.
So, okay.
So does that conclude our deliberations relative to Chelsea?
So just for everybody's sake, what will happen is Michael and I will get together and draft up a recommendation with findings and a conclusion. We will send that out to the board. You folks, if we don't hear from you, then we will proceed to send it to the Select Board. If we, if you folks request to hear an additional meeting, we will schedule one, and it will be publicly noted. So this may be it for us on this particular topic for now, or maybe that we'll be back in a couple weeks to finalize a written decision. But I feel pretty good about the detailed discussion this evening. I think Michael and I will be able to capture it. You'll be able to tell us by either not responding or asking for an additional meeting, and we can proceed from there. Again, just to reiterate once more, recommendations to the Select Board, you folks unfortunately will have to attend a Select Board meeting in order to continue your discussion on this topic, but we, you know what our recommendation is, and proceed from there, so.
Well, thank you all, and Dan, do you have any other business that you want to?
No, I think a motion to adjourn would be welcome.
Yes. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none.